We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, we are the nation of America, in this world, the representative and special strong.
Thank you. Kira, you want to do a roll call for us, please?
Lyon.
Order one here.
Shaffer.
Order one here.
Dillon.
Order two here.
Massey.
Order two here.
Ruffing.
Order three here.
Blackwood.
Order four here.
Carter.
Order four here.
Eisman.
Order four here.
Okay, do we have any comments from the floor about this agenda? Okay. Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the bills for October. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the monthly reports, the city clerk, city treasurer, port clerk for October. Do I have a motion?
Motion second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 86, local law number 11, amending the fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
Motion second.
Okay. And we will need any discussion? Okay, we'll need a roll call on this one.
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dillon.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Eisman.
Yes.
Okay. Our next one is resolution number 87, local law number 12, illegal conversion ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, a roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dillon.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Eisman.
Yes.
Okay. Next one is resolution number 88, local law number 13, poultry and livestock ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dillon.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Eisman.
Yes.
Okay. Our next is resolution number 89, request public hearing for local law number 14, tax cap override. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, something we do pretty much every year. We look at it and have it just in case we need it. Roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dillon.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Eisman.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 90, request public hearing for local law number 15, establishing garbage collection user fee for residential dwelling units. Do I have a motion?
Motion second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
So, I read through this, like $240, that is on top of the taxes, correct? Or it's not included in it? It's...
It is not a tax. It is a user fee. So, it will be on the same sheet of paper, but a different line.
It's completely separate?
Right.
Okay, all right. But that will be in addition?
Yes, it would be. And so, this is, we're just looking for a hearing right now, so that we can kind of explore it a little bit better. It's one of those things that Sarah can share with us, too. We've been between a rock and a hard place in trying to balance this budget, and we do not want to lay off people if we can help it, and this is where we are. And so, this is a recommendation. We'll see. Sarah is working on some numbers and some support materials that we'll have for the hearing, but tonight is just really the hearing. Anything you want to add, Sarah?
No, not really.
Okay.
Obviously, the budget is very tight. I mean, we're faced with cutting services or possibly charging per service so you don't have to lose others. It's kind of the point that we're at, so...
We've looked at what others are doing. We have such a good DPW, and the garbage pickup is the best in the region, and I've done the research and looked at what others are paying, and it's outrageous. So, it's still a good value at $20, but we'll talk more about it at the hearing. So, today, we're just really looking for, you know, approval to have the hearing in December. So, any other questions, comments?
Would this change garbage collection anyway, or would it be exactly the same garbage collection?
Exactly the same, yeah. You don't buy any bags, you don't do anything, and that's what, you know, everybody loves what we do, but it's an investment in equipment and all that. Others, if you haven't made it, you can hardly afford it. But others, like Herkimer, theirs went up 60% in the last year, so, and they only, they require every time there is another, this is for a small tote that's like $100 a quarter, and if you want another one, then you have to pay extra. If you have a bulk item, you have to make a reservation for them to come pick it up. I really want to go that direction. I don't think anybody in this room does either. We have a very good deal. They pick up everything, including leaves and, you know, green waste, lots and lots of things. So, that's kind of where we are, but yeah. Any other questions?
Mayor, I would encourage, and I hope we can notify, you know, the public and let them know that what we're doing, and if there's questions, call, get ahold of us, you know, because we, we're looking at this very hard. We, you know, we examine this issue very, very hard. Difficult thing to do, and there's going to be a lot of doubts, and there's going to be a lot of questions that people have. Don't remain, don't have mysteries in your mind. Call, clarify with your alderman, or call the mayor's office and get clarity on these issues, so that they can understand exactly what's going on.
Right, happy to do that. I've got an open door policy always to have.
And we all, we take...
My cellphone number is, is on the website, so it's pretty easy to access for sure. Mike?
Just so, if you could figure out over the next month, do we have enough budget revenue a month that we would be looking at?
Five hundred thousand.
About five hundred thousand.
If I were to...
To offset the expenses of certain...
Yeah. We've had a lot of expenses in any, in the personnel services area with, I mean, in cra- double-digit increases in everything, and including the big jumps in the pension plans, you know? Third, what is it, 37% of payroll is in pension for police and fire, so, and then insurance, 28% hike, comp alliance, another double-digit hike. It just goes on and on, so, yeah. But we were, we were, when we first started the budget, we were 1.2 million that we had to shave off of it. This was a solution to stay within the budget, to be able to balance it. Anyone else? Okay, roll call?
Lyon.
Yes.
Shaffer.
Yes.
Dillon.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Ruffing.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Eisman.
Yes.
Okay. Our next item, any new business? Okay. Any old business? Okay, comments from the floor?
Hi.
Okay, we've got several, so if you would stand, please.
Are you guys thinking she wants to share?
Okay, okay, so that we don't talk over each other. So, Heidi, you wanting to say something?
Yes.
Okay, and just your name and what ward you're in, if you know it, or are you from Little Falls, that sort of thing?
Hi, everyone. I'm Heidi Fox. I live here on Little Falls on Loomis Street, and I just want to start by saying, I really love our city, and I think it is a wonderful place that I've always wanted to live, ever since I was a little girl. My daughter and I love to be very active in the community, doing volunteer work that we feel is important, because we want our city to be just as wonderful as it is. And something has come to my attention recently that is really concerning to me as a resident here in Little Falls. There are homeless people that have no safe place to go, no opportunity to have food and meals provided in some way, and I have been looking into personally just what options we have to try to support our community, and I feel like we all matter, all of us, each person, and you never know when it could be one of us, and they, each person matters just as much as everyone else. And so, as a community, I want us to look into what we can do and what we can offer in Little Falls for the people that are homeless in our community. So, I have attended the Loaves and Fishes meeting in Herkimer, and they're working towards different things. A warming shelter was something that they had been working on for Herkimer, and Gabriel has been in touch with the Catholic Church in regards to what they can do to support a place for people to get warm. So, as a community, I ask for all of you guys to come together and consider what we could look into in the way of grants, in the way of volunteering, in the way of making sure that everyone is cared for. I care greatly for everyone. I love Little Falls. This is a place that I want to spend my life, and I am just so grateful to be here and be a part of this community. And as a community that's so strong and so wonderful, I believe that we can make a difference, and that we can look into what grants there are, and that we can see what opportunities there are, and I think this is really important, because everybody needs to have a space that they can feel safe, that they can rest comfortably without being out in the rain and the snow, and know that they can have a meal to eat. I think as a community, we really need to come together and make a difference. So, I'm asking you, as a group, to think what we can do as a community. So, I thank you for your time listening to what I've had to say, and I am sure that we will go forward and do something that will be very helpful for everyone involved. Thank you.
We appreciate it. We're actually aware of that, and we've been working with the police department and Father Slazik to discuss matters of public safety and some of the things that we also have to be concerned with, but I appreciate your comments, and I know the food pantry's been doing a lot, too, to the Family Center over there, the Catholic charities and all, so it's wonderful, but yes, I think we all have big hearts around here, that's for sure. Anyone else?
Do you want me to stand? I can speak well.
You can, you can stand from right there if you would just speak up and give us your name, please.
The microphone will pick you up way over there, while...
Jordiann Miller, Ward 3, just a couple of questions about the public hearing process. I'm wondering if it's possible in advance for the next council meeting, if the public hearing, like the contents of the local law, could potentially be shared? I noticed today the resolution numbers were incorrect that were listed on My Little Falls versus what shows up in the agenda today, this evening. So, just that point of clarification, but also, it's helpful, I think, to see the content of the local law. I don't feel passionately one way or another about the poultry situation, to be honest, but just, I, I wouldn't know what to say, because I didn't know what was in the local law, and I'm concerned with the tax cap override and the garbage fees, the lack of context and bigger picture numbers around those. I think it will be difficult for residents to be able to weigh in meaningfully if they don't have anything to work with, besides, there's a public hearing.
Thank you. Right, and I think that all of these things, as far as the local laws, are part of the packet that the council people do receive, and they go online after the meeting, like tonight's meeting, and they, you know, the minutes, as soon as we get the minutes finished, those local laws will be in there. So, we try to give you as much information as we can, and always you can pick up a copy from Kira.
That happens after the fact. I'm, I guess I'm suggesting proactive communication about things our residents would be expected to weigh in on at public hearings.
Okay, and certainly, last meeting would have had that information for them, too.
Yeah, Mayor, correct if I'm wrong, but last month, we talked about the agreed ad public hearing, and we discussed this matter.
Yep, and that was here.
Is that available, Mark?
Correct.
So, we have public hearings next month for garbage collection fee, that we don't have larger context or any additional budget numbers or projections available for. One. Two, the, the other public hearing, excuse me, let me just remind myself, tax cap override. I know that you mentioned it's just an in case we need it, but, you know, is there additional language that residents should be aware of, additional context that might help people weigh in, because there wasn't much discussion on either of those fronts when you voted to hold a public hearing?
But there usually isn't.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify. So, the copies of the local laws for next month's public hearing are in tonight's packet.
Will be available?
So, yeah, when this is available after the meeting, there will be copies of the local laws for that public hearing in this packet.
And those are in the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for submitting.
Yep.
And then you can also call me if you have to email or make a copy when I'm ready to do.
Well, let me clarify that, minutes are not put online until they're approved and signed.
So, that could be another...
So, they don't go out there without, that's, it's not legal to put minutes up online. They're not, they're...
So, but we did request the draft minutes. Residents can request the draft minutes, yes?
Yes.
And whatever you saw on My Little Falls came straight to the city clerk. I don't edit it.
Yes, so I work, I have a Benadryl on my hand.
Yes.
There's a lot on my hand, so I can definitely...
So, so we won't see the local laws until, not next month, the following, once you approve it. It'll be available publicly online. Is that correct? So, the minutes from this evening will not be approved until next month?
If you want a copy, you can get one from Kira earlier, right? But we do not post until they are approved and signed off on.
Thank you.
Because there are things in the minutes that, maybe there's questions, someone who wants to discuss it, or maybe it was misinterpreted. We want to make sure that we have the most accurate minutes possible. So, if you want it before then, either, Kira has it all, so, I mean, you can take a look and read it if you want to, but it doesn't get posted for the general public.
Statutorily, it's required that once the public hearing is set, that the local law is on file with the clerk, and it is for the public, and that's true in all municipalities throughout the state of New York. Usually, they're not official until they're passed, but the law requires, law requires that once the public hearing is set, that the local law is on file with the clerk, and as far as I know, they all are.
That's true. Yeah.
Again, like I stated before, call your alderman, call your representative, we'll have those copies, we can explain it to you. If there's questions we can answer, you will have that answer in 24 hours. There's, there's nobody in this, in this chamber right now that wouldn't do that for, for the dozens of calls that we receive, maybe not monthly, but, you know, at times when things are controversial, we'll receive dozens of calls, and we have, we need answers to questions, because obviously, people have questions, and that's what we're here for. So, I mean, we have work, cricket to it, and you, you know, you can get the copies from Kira, or you can just call your representative and you can put it on the, that's what we're here for.
Okay, anyone else?
I was just going to add, I think my comment, you know, is not that it was a question of whether or not people had access to this information, but just where they can access it, but people might have not.
And I think we've answered that clearly. Okay.
I got one more question.
Sure.
What is the tax cap, what's the percentage?
We don't have it calculated yet.
We don't have it yet?
We do not. So, by December, we will, but it depends on what the budget is and the formulas that have to be factored in. Until we get OSC to sign off on what we proposed, and we have, you know, hearing and all that, I mean, there's nothing we can do with regard to having an answer to that. Okay, and anything else? Okay, we'll move along to the engineer's report. Chat, that would be you.
So, some good news this month, a couple of good, large projects for the summer have closed up. Finished up the wastewater treatment plant, oil replacement project is number one. Chip's paving program has gone fairly well. Eisman Road, Ritter Road, Manhattan Street have been completed with gold paint, although the weather's got the best of us for the hot mix that was planned for King and Bird Street, so that's going to have to be kicked to spring. Smith Free, Essam Hospital parking lot, that very large, tough project over there is complete. That's it, it's very happy. We've got some, some emails from them and conversations, but things went well. Our contractor was fantastic, and engineers have all attached to the project, which are great, so hopefully that one is off our radar over the next hundred years. Wastewater treatment plant, disinfection project, we ordered the largest piece to, a piece of electrical equipment, which is due in April, and it needs to be online in May by our EDC permit, so we're, we're close there, but I think we're in good shape because it stands roofing work, also because the weather is going to be kicked to the spring. Water treatment plant, two projects there. Sand meter replacement, we started strategy for that, and we can't go too far into strategy until we get the grant awards in December. We have grants announced in December, so depending on the timeline and how much we're rewarded, and we can come up with a strategy to get meter replaced as fast as possible, because our membrane filtration unit that we have, it's coming online. Keeping that in place is dependent on getting the sand filter meter replaced, so dependencies there are strong. Waiting on Department of Health right now to approve us going online with the membrane filter, and the mayor and I could reach out this week to DOH to try and move that along.
To nudge them along a little bit.
Nudge them along. Overall, we've had, closed up some good projects this year and made really good progress. Any questions on the rest of the report? Let me know, reach out anytime.
Yeah, any questions for Chat at the moment? Okay, thanks, Chat.
Thank you.
And we'll move along to mayor's comments. We've lost a good friend, colleague, and Judge Ed Rose over the last week, and thought we might just take a moment of silence to remember him. He was not only our city attorney for many years, but he was judge as well, so if we could for just a couple of minutes here, just take a moment for him. Okay, also, the city has been flying flags at half-staff. If you've noticed that, it's not because they're falling down, it is in honor of Judge Rose, so we, we will all miss him for sure. Moving along, cash position, today we're at 2.964 million in the general fund water sewer golf. We also have 899,675 in our reserve fund. Happy to say another month coming through, and we are current with our outstanding invoices. Sarah didn't have anything to write in there, which was wonderful, to, everything is the way it should be, and that's a long time coming, so we struggle for a long time. We've collected 3.8 million of our expected 3.9 million in tax revenue, plus an additional 333,000, being water sewer in codes re-levee. We will be sending the unpaid taxes back to the county at this point for re-levee, and we are no longer accepting payments. We're working through union contract negotiations for two unions, FIRE and DPW, over the past couple of weeks, making good progress, lots of back and forth, very cordial, so I'm optimistic that we'll be able to get that accomplished over the next few weeks. Budgeting is underway, as we were talking before. We've had OSC auditors, comptroller's office auditors, in for the past couple of weeks, working and reviewing all our numbers and support documents to those numbers. We expect a public hearing and a vote, hopefully in December council's meeting, council meeting. Fingers crossed, they're working really hard to get it completed by that time. Depending on the review, right now, we're looking at, hopefully, having everything for you to take a look at December the 2nd. We may have to push that, depending on how much more time they need. So, we're kind of at the mercy of what they're doing, and to reiterate how this works, the timeline, we gave them the draft budget on October the 24th. How this works is OSC sees it before anyone else sees it. They approve, reject, recommend at that point. Then we revise any changes that need to be made, work with the finance committee, and then we end up bringing it to the public, but not until then. So, nothing is firm or solid, and I know people have been concerned that they haven't been able to see it yet. You won't see it until we see it, and that's after we get the recommendations from OSC. Because we're in deficit financing, they have the privilege of reviewing everything we do prior to it going to the public. Election day tomorrow, 12 council members are vying for eight seats, so city clerk, treasurer positions, best of luck to everyone. We have, the appointed treasurer referendum is on the back page of the ballot, so please take a look at it. We're really, you know, we really need to move forward on it. It happened during our last term, and it came very close. We're here again with the reality that we face, with just not enough people in Little Falls to be able to find talented accounting people, so it is something we desperately need. As far as economic development highlights, Little Falls has welcomed over 12 new businesses in 2025. So, that says something. They're small business, but businesses, but they're wonderful, they're part of the community, a lot of them mom and pop businesses, which is what Little Falls has been born and raised on over the years. We've done a lot with small businesses, so we're delighted to have them. We have two new ones from this meeting. We have Array of Light that's now open on Main Street. The business is restoring balance through nature light frequency and bioenergetic medicine. It's a really interesting business. And then we also have Timeless Floral Designs Flower Shop to open this weekend, replacing Tiffany's Designs. The DRI, we have a public forum happening on next Thursday at 6:00 PM at the roadway in the banquet room there, and we want to open the dialogue again about the Main Street project, specifically the Main Street canopy, the diagonal parking, and streetscaping. So, it would love for everyone to join us and share your input, like we did with the first public meeting that we had back when Dave, myself, and Chat had worked on this. We had these big posters, and you could put your Post-it notes, your opinion about each one, and so we'll probably follow that same format. Urban Renewal Jacob is going to be taking the lead on that, and Chat hopefully will print out some very large posters for us. But I think it's, it's going to be a good, meaningful meeting, so that we can get to the point where the next step would be design specs, and we're getting a little bit closer. We've had a lot of input from people, and some like the canopy, some don't like the canopy. We need to get a little bit closer to, you know, what a consensus might look like. So, please join us next week on Thursday at 6:00 PM. Downtown Improvement Grant, the $600,000 grant, we've got 10 projects in the works. Urban Renewal is doing the administrating on that project and doing a great job. So, Ed and Bud's old building there that's now Scottshire, they ended up, and his wife, getting a new roof replacement, and HVAC is on the way, so some good things happening. We're excited about that, and other projects are getting closer and closer to being able to be ready to go. So, that, and then Seeley Street Pop Promenade, that project. Canals Port is still waiting for the federal permits. As soon as we have them, you will have a little more updated information. They've done the design... They've done the design, I think it's been 98% done for quite a while now. And once they do the skybridge, then the Promenade, the Seeley Street Promenade would be next. So we're on a waiting list. My guess would be 27. What do you think, Chet?
It's gonna be equal.
By the time, if they can get the permits in. Other projects, Derriman's Ada, $30 million resort, Cannabis Dispensary, and CBS, no activity at this point. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?